Called order, the Town Superior Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 7th. Phyllis, can we have the roll call, please?
Chairperson Clint Pulson.
Here.
Commissioners Rita Dozel.
Here.
Joanne Eaton.
Here.
Paula Sartain here.
Mark Lasis.
Here.
Jerry Malia.
Here.
Bob Momarts.
Here.
Tom Ricker.
Kim Satell.
Here.
Planner Fred Cox.
Here.
Attorney Liz Cross.
All right. Do you want to go through the agenda? And we were going to add a couple of things to the agenda.
Sure. So in addition to the main item on the agenda, which is approval of the August 19th, 2014 minutes, and then review and comment on the parcel number 34 REVX annexation. Should you choose to elect a vice chair, you guys currently, the commission's currently serving without a vice chair, should you choose to elect that, we should formally add that to the agenda, as well as the potential for a few discussion items. The agenda was a little light, so you have the option of opening the discussion on the 2014 work plan. I wouldn't consider this maybe a finalization of that work plan, just to start to get the thoughts flowing as far as potential changes to the work plan for 2015. My apologies, sorry. As well as, there was some mention from the board at the retreat regarding Planning Commission qualifications. And so it would be up to you if you'd like to have a brief discussion regarding qualifications of the Planning Commission. If you do, we'd like to add that to the, have you add that to the agenda as well.
Okay. So we've got three possible items. Is it, I'm good with adding those three items. Is there anyone else that'd like to get a motion to add those three items from someone?
I'll make a motion to add the three items discussed.
Motion. Motion from Commissioner Dozel, second from Commissioner Momarts. All those in favor? Pass is unanimous. Okay. So we'll add those on as six, seven, and eight, and then have staff announcements be nine, and adjournment be 10. Six, seven, and eight. Okay. All right. Before we dive into number three, I want to welcome our two new Planning Commission members, Mark Lasis and Jerry Malia. Welcome to the commission.
Thank you.
Item number three is public comment on consent agenda or non-agenda items. Anyone in the public wish to comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, the approval of the August 19th, 2014 minutes. Have a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Dozel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eaton. All those in favor?
Actually, all, the two new ones, I'll have them abstain.
Okay.
Because they weren't here with me.
I think I need to abstain also, Phyllis, I don't think I was here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Next is item number five, review and comment on the parcel number 34 REVX annexation. Staff presentation.
Just a brief kind of introduction as far as this annexation. It comes forth to you tonight, kind of as a cleanup item with regards to the town center. The parcel was acquired by the town in 2013 as part of a land exchange with CDOT. They acquired some right-of-way near the McCaslin interchange. In exchange, the town received this parcel, or these two parcels of land. They are immediately east and southeast of the historical cemetery. The Planning Commission, they're town-owned land, and so the annexation process for town-owned land doesn't require a petition of annexation. It doesn't require public notice for annexation. It's very much straightforward. It doesn't really even require review and comment by the Planning Commission. However, we did bring that item before you tonight to get your thoughts on this one, to share with the town board. It will be considered by the town board on October 27th.
Okay. Thank you.
All I would say is, this is a typical remnant piece that happens when CDOT acquires property, and then they change their mind, and so they develop, by the get to the development point. If you look at the town boundary, it does have jagged places along US 36. This is one of them. And so with the land swaps and so on, it was not formally, it was not part of the town because the boundary of the town did not include this. So we basically planned it as part of the town center plan, but it's just never been annexed. So we need to do that. It's basically a cleanup.
One other item to clarify that as well. Currently, it is town-owned. It's part of the town center plan development. The intent for the parcel will transfer ownership to Ranch Capital. It was included as part of a land swap that was agreed to by the town board prior agreement. So the ownership transfer and things like that, it's already accounted for. It will occur with some other land swaps that are occurring between the town and Ranch Capital. So this is part of that. But currently, it's town-owned.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the commission?
That was my question, was if we own it, how does it get part of the town center then as Ranch Capital or RC Superior sue, you know? That's not in the documentation here anywhere that talks about that, because it said, "We own it." So what's the administrative portion of part of that that allows for that?
So my understanding is that it was included as part of the land calculations that went along with some of the land swaps that occur with the BBI transaction, and some of the land swaps that occur for some of the land that's the town-owned parcels on the north and block one, lots one and two. That's my understanding. The full detail of that transaction, I don't have that information before, I mean, tonight.
Okay. That's fine. It just was, because that was not in this packet, that talked about that we owned it. Then I thought, well, how will then certain blocks be laid over it, overlaid on it, which it's already planned for, to have certain blocks from the Superior Town Center on there?
Right. So then, long-term, then, you're right, part of the land will then come back to the town, dedicated back to the town as tracks, and then part of it then would be retained for residential development. I believe a portion of this has a residential block on the southern end of it.
Right. So I think that, from my perspective, I know we don't get or have to do anything or make a resolution or anything like that, but I think we should explain that a little bit better when you bring it to the board, is that this is ours, but it was part of this, whenever, whatever, and we did this this way, and it's really not ours. It's really part of RC Superior or Ranch Capital's purchase and the land swap. And then, because all of that, when we've been talking about it, has always been part of, or it was understood it was owned by Ranch Capital. I never knew there was a triangular portion of land here that we really own, but I don't think we technically own it, because we've already swapped it.
Technically, we do. I did, we did the title search, and we confirmed with the title company that it is vested in the town. The transfer of that property has not yet occurred. It's part of the land swaps that will occur, which is part of the reason, we need to get the annexation done, but it's part of the reason that it's, the annexation process is much simpler for town, municipal only.
Okay. Then that, now that makes a little bit more sense to me. So we are just annexing it, and then we have to take another action as a town to actually swap it back over to...
I'm not sure if it requires action, and that's not, I'm not that familiar with the document, but I'm not sure if it requires action, but the approval of that transaction, I believe, has already occurred through, you know, the prior approvals. So the transfer of ownership, that process is already laid out, so I don't know that that requires a separate board action.
Okay. I would just ask again that those actions that have already been taken, that has swapped it, be identified and documented when you present it to the town board for consideration. That would be great.
Okay. Good suggestion. Are there other questions or suggestions? Okay. Do we need to make a motion on this, or just pass along the comment?
No, it's just review and comment. There's no approval necessary from the motion.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to item number six, which is new item number six, election of a vice chair. So the commission's been without a vice chair since Commissioner Bob McCool retired, and so we need to elect a new vice chair, and...
Yes, that's a good place to start.
I will entertain any motions by anyone to nominate someone.
You want a nomination, not a motion.
Or nomination.
Okay. I nominate Jim Satell.
Okay. Commissioner Eaton has nominated Commissioner Satell.
My second nomination.
Second by Commissioner Momarts. Discussion. I think Commissioner Satell would make a good vice chair. That's my extent of the discussion. All right. Let's vote. All those in favor of Commissioner Satell as our vice chair? Okay. That was easy. Passage unanimous. Congratulations, Commissioner Satell. Now the vice chair.
It's a good place to start.
All right. Item number seven is discussion of the 2015 work plan, and we'll start with the 2014 work plan as a starting point.
Just for a bit of review, this was what was presented to you for the 2014 work plan. Review and comment on development projects. Review and comment on major capital improvement projects. Ongoing update and discussion regarding future plans for the town center project. That did not remain on the work plan. Ongoing update and discussion regarding proposed Jefferson Parkway. Again, that one did not remain on the 2014 work plan as well. And then the land use code cleanup to address some inconsistencies. And then review and comment on the transportation plan, which has since been approved. There were some items for discussion that Commissioner Dozel had raised, which was meeting with City of Louisville, potentially some other surrounding communities on a regular basis as a planning commission. And I'm not certain where those ended up, but this is where we, this is what was listed as the approved 2014 work plan. Comment on development projects, major capital improvements, and the land use code cleanup to address some inconsistencies. Just as an update for where we're at with that item number three, Fred and primarily Fred, myself, and Phyllis have put together a pretty comprehensive list of what the changes potentially could be. Steph, though, I think at this point, will be waiting until following the election to bring that forth to the Planning Commission for opening that dialogue and working through that process following the election. So it's up to you.
Are there items that the commission would like to add to this list, take off, modify? We don't have to come up with a final list tonight. We're just going to start the process, and then in the future meetings, we can finalize this as we get a little bit closer to end of year, sort of 2015. Do you want to talk about the possible meeting with other jurisdictions?
Right. I thought we had left the transportation planning. I know we completed a transportation plan vision. It's not a plan, it's a vision for what we might do with transportation. You know, it's a possibility of this and a possibility of that. But I think we should, we talked also at that meeting where we would go beyond that vision for transportation and really think about, you know, because a lot of people came and talked about all the roundabouts that were included in that first transportation plan vision. And I think if we're going to include things like roundabouts in a plan, at least we're calling it a plan, it's not really a plan, it's more of a vision, then we need to be more definitive about this and how we would go about determining what transportation changes or new transportation, like the roundabouts, that we would be proposing or discussing, because we can't propose anything, but we could propose for discussion. I think we need to leave it back on there. I don't know why it came off. I do recognize that we approved the transportation plan vision, which I've always said is a vision. It's not a plan. A plan means that you're going to implement something. You're going to go forth now, take the plan, and execute on that plan. So what we need to do is decide as a planning commission, if we want to go further than that, take that vision for transportation, look at some of the issues that we're trying to, that we brought up. Some of them were even, that people talked about were connections to other trails, but also, you know, in connections to RTD, you know, call-a-ride, share-ride, or whatever, you know, and access to the airport from our park-and-ride here. I mean, there were a lot of things, I think, that we could take on as a planning commission and talk about and think about, because, you know, we're listening to our residents, and we're hearing a lot of these things. So I think this is where we should bring them forth and discuss them. So I would propose that we leave transportation planning on there, you know, as more, going beyond the vision that we created in the plan. And then we also talked about meeting with Louisville Planning Commission, which they asked to meet with us. So I think we should include something like that. If you don't want to specifically say we're going to meet with the Louisville Planning Commission, then I think we should say, you know, seek out or look for opportunities to collaborate, or, I shouldn't say that's probably not the word, communicate is a better word, with our, with our surrounding planning commissions from other communities around. And even Broomfield is right up, it touches our city or our town. So we should, we should look out, reach out to those people too, and talk about that. I was almost positive we had that on there as number five. And then the thing that has come up in the last several months for me, and even as I've talked to a lot of residents over the last couple of months, the whole Coal Creek Corridor itself, and I don't know how to contextualize that, but the idea of doing something with the Coal Creek Corridor, the creek itself, when I say Coal Creek, I mean the Coal Creek Corridor that runs through here, well, it's over here, runs through here and then down over to McCaslin. And I think we could contemplate whether or not that might be an item that we'd want to consider, you know, as part of working again with open space and Parks and Recreation and the developers to see about what kind of a Coal Creek Corridor do we envision in the next 20 years for the town of Superior. Those would be the three things I would like to see us consider adding.
Okay. Other items? Or discussion on those items?
I just had a question on the transportation piece of it, because I may not have been tracking, but did, it was my memory that that all went to the board, to the Board of Trustees, and did they act ultimately on this transportation?
They did. They approved it in February, I believe, of 2014. They made a few modifications over, you know, beyond the plan from when it left the Planning Commission, not, nothing of, you know, no true formative, you know, real substantive changes, but they definitely made some changes.
But it's not a plan.
Okay.
You know, so then let's, I think, maybe I'm not, we should need to understand what we're saying. It's a vision of potential things to look at, but there's no plan. Okay. May I in?
Go ahead.
Could we get copies of this?
Absolutely. There's copies on the town website, but I'm happy to make copies. You bet. I think Steph's, I think how Alex, Alex, who is the Public Works Director, kind of spearheaded the transportation plan update, and his, maybe speaking out of turn, but I believe he would look at it as, it's a plan that lays out potential future improvements. However, when the time comes to make those changes or potentially implement a change, that transportation plan is a referring document that shows kind of the vision of the town at the time for what the town intended some potential future changes could be. It's definitely something that we refer back to. It has elements of a plan within it, and it's somewhat executable. I mean, there are some specific details in there, but as improvements come forth, they'll be evaluated at that time, you know, more specifically and greater detail.
It's sort of like a living document. It can be changed, and it can be...
It's really a, sort of a chapter of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
That's what it is, but a comprehensive plan as well is not a plan. It's not like a plan development or a, it's a vision for, it's a guideline for going forward. But when we talk about like McCaslin, which is a huge problem for a lot of residents, you know, I think we should take that on, instead of just saying, yes, we, we're going to have to do something with McCaslin. And, you know, people have talked about the speed is too high, too low, you know, then there's, there's roundabouts proposed potentially as a vision in this plan. And I think that we should take it and be less nebulous about it if we're actually going to do something and propose something.
That's what I'd like to see in that.
Yeah.
So I guess, yeah, the question is, do we want to, I mean, do we want to have the comprehensive plan on here for that matter? I mean, is it, is it worth, you know, ongoing review, or is it better to just address those when they are up for their every-five-year review? That's really the question, is it, you know, should it be here, should it be here on an ongoing basis, or should it be...
Well, if this was an extension of our approving it, you know, now we're saying, okay, now let's take the next step from that. Because I think that if you do something that's a vision, and you don't touch it for five years, then it's worthless. You know? If you say, well, we'll just leave it set there until five years from now, when we want to take another look at it, if it's really a living document, we should regularly...
Take a look at it.
Look at it and move it along down the road. I don't mean the entire thing, every piece of it, but we should pick the thing that's most impactful to the town and important to the residents, and say, let's do something about this, instead of saying, oh, yeah, we put that, we identified that issue in the transportation plan, and then we drop our voice. I'm not sure that that's, that's what we're here to do.
I think that's reasonable to keep, to keep revisiting it.
I don't know if this, I'm paying too much attention to semantics, but I interpret that the words "transportation planning" as something that's continuous and fluid, because they had a choice of putting "transportation plan" or "transportation planning." So to me, planning means fluid, and I think that's, if we want to get involved, that's how we do it. That's the doorway.
Okay. Yep. So that's the question. Do we want it as another numbered item, or is it good up there? Thoughts?
We just had the same issue, that we only thought we had a three items, so no one made that first thing. So I would be more, I lean more toward being more definitive and measurable, rather than, okay, we're just going to, you know, shoot the moon, which is full tonight, and see what we can, you know, come up with when it happens.
It would be sort of like saying, "To include, but not limited to," and then list a few items, or, I mean, I'm trying to figure out how we want to lay this out.
I don't know why that first paragraph's really, maybe that's the goal or something, and then, I mean, the mission or some...
Yeah, those are the goals.
And then, and then the actual tactics or actions.
Action items.
Action items are under there. So I think an action item is more definitive than a, we're here to do all this, because we know what the Planning Commission is about, is all those things at the top. But if you're going to do an action item, a work plan, we're going to take action and work on these items, and I think it's more than just one, two, and three.
Everyone else good with making transportation planning as an action item? Okay. Meeting with other jurisdictions, specifically Louisville-Broomfield, is that a good idea? Good idea? Okay.
We've talked about that.
Add that. And then open, this open space Coal Creek Corridor idea, is that, is that something that, what are other commissioners' thoughts on that?
I don't understand what you mean about that, because to do what with Coal Creek?
The Open Space Committee and the Parks and Recreation and Trails Committees have talked about, and it's been talked about in the applicants' presentations, not about them doing it, but that the Coal Creek Corridor is here, and it's a floodplain, and it's really for us as a town to do something with. We, the Coal Creek, the creek itself, the floodplain, is there, and what do we want that to be? A lot of people have talked about it. So I think it's, instead of no one really understanding what we're talking about, maybe we should get a little better definition about it, because it's obvious that we don't understand it here around the table the same way. And Coal Creek Corridor, the Coal Creek Corridor itself has been talked about for years, and how do we want to have that, what's the vision for that in the future? And I don't know if that's in the comprehensive plan specifically called that.
There's really not a vision for the Coal Creek Corridor in the plan in terms of saying, you know, let's do this and that, or we, one of the complications in that, I think we need to understand that initially, is that, so a lot of that property, the floodplain, is privately owned. And so putting together a vision for it involves a number of owners, as well as the town doing things to improve the drainage through there, which is what it's going to do with this latest plan that we've passed, that we've been working on in terms of mitigation. How that evolves outward from that to create more of a corridor that pedestrians can access is another issue, another question, and something that would need a fair amount of discussion. Because I'm sure there's some private owners that wouldn't, don't care to have. They want their drainage dealt with as best they can, even though they know they're in the floodplain, but they may not want to have public access.
Right. What I've heard most people talk about when they talk about the Coal Creek Corridors from Second Avenue Bridge over to 36.
This way.
Yeah. East 36. So I'm not talking about private property going west. So it's usually associated with...
Oh, okay. Well, that's interesting, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So apologize for that. It's usually, most people, when they talk about, at least that's the way I've heard it defined, is from Second Avenue Bridge going to McCaslin, and generally through the development, the PDs and the plan development areas. So, and I recognize that all of that would have to be worked with the applicants as they come through, but we've already been doing that. And I think that if we understand, just like, now, this discussion, we have a different view of what that is, maybe it would be good to have a better definition or view when we say Coal Creek Corridor, because I've heard the different town trustees talk about that, you know, and I've heard it at the Open Space Committee, and I've heard it at Pro Stack, so, and I don't know if it's a work item as much as maybe an item that we need to think about in 2015, and help define a little bit better, so that when someone says Coal Creek Corridor, what are we talking about? Because you're right, Fred, that there's two aspects of it. One is the flooding itself, and that's, like you said, being worked. But then the other is, how do we, what do we do with it, is from Second Avenue all through, down through, and over to 36, where it goes, where the trail goes under 36 and goes over into Louisville.
I guess for me, I'd kind of rather see that come via a comprehensive plan discussion, you know, come, I mean, which, the comprehensive plan is something that the Planning Commission does, and we just went through that in 2012. And so I guess that's a question for the commission, is, you know, do they want to maybe add that in advance of the next comprehensive plan update, or... plan update or just discuss it until then or?
How would the, how would the desires and the visioning of the Open Space and the Pro Stack Committees, does that go directly to the town board or would that come through us?
It will come through us because they're ultimately probably looking at a major public improvement, just like the park up here, Founder's Park. A lot of work was done by the Pro Stack, and they had help, not only from staff, but they also had some consultants working on that.
Right.
And they came up with a plan, and Planning Commission discussed it, and if they had other ideas that they wanted to throw in, they did, but a lot of the bulwark had been done already by the committee. And so that plan was, but it was discussed at Planning Commission as a major public improvement.
So that might be the way it comes, you know, rather than just waiting for the comprehensive plan, which would be three years from now, then it might be that it comes through them, but maybe what we, just to let them know that we're available to assist in that, because they can't, as committees, recommend, they're not quasi-judicial like we are. So that's where I'm saying that we have a little bit more weight when we talk about these things than some of those recommendations that come from the committees. And I'm okay, you know, I just threw it down here as one thing that came to mind. I'm not going to sit on it one way or the other needing it. I just think it's something to keep in mind, you know, as we go forward into 2015. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that can be kind of a draft list?
Yeah, we'll keep a running list and bring these back to you so that these items don't get dropped, and then over the next few weeks, this will be a formal agenda item on the 21st, and then you can continue the discussion at that point.
Okay, so you will bring this back on the 21st?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the last or the next item is item number eight, discussion of Planning Commission qualifications at the town board's last work session. A trustee, Pennington, brought up the question of whether planning commissioners should have perhaps some prerequisites or more qualifications before being appointed to Planning Commission. And the, there was some discussion, and the conclusion of that discussion was, send it to the Planning Commission and let them talk about it.
Right.
So here we are, October 7th, and we're going to, we're going to talk about that and we're going to send them some comments back and...
Did she have any suggestions?
Well, I think the, I think the idea was that in a perfect world, that people coming to Planning Commission would have two years on Pro Stack and a year over here on the Historical Commission, and maybe, you'd have a wide range of experience...
In the community.
In the community, know about everything, have a little bit of knowledge of everything.
Makes us dangerous, go ahead.
And in order to, you know, to be in this position that is widely regarded as making some important decisions. And so that was, that was the desire. So then, so I think the question is, do we want that? Is that, is that realistic or is...
Is it coming from the standpoint, if I may, that she's not pleased with how this has worked out up until now?
I think the desire is to, all the trustees, I think, want to have maximum confidence in what comes out of Planning Commission.
Of course.
And to that end, they want to believe that the people on Planning Commission are as qualified as they can be. So I think that's where it's coming from. And so let's, you know, maybe each, doesn't have to be every, each of us, but those of you who have comments on that, let's weigh in, and staff will take some notes and we'll maybe agree on a set of bullet points to send back to them.
I think experience with a community being some sort of a time, I mean, they're asking for arbitrary standards in a way, you know? Where do you draw the line? This is a typical legal issue, and that seems to be right here, but I would say certainly that somebody that's familiar with the town has lived here for X number of years or have been involved with the town for X number of years should be some sort of a basis so that you don't get somebody that's, shall we say, green, totally green, coming in here and doing X, Y, and wanting to have X, Y, and Z accomplished when they're not really familiar with the whole picture coming in.
A lot of that depends upon personal agendas, and I think that would have some concern. In other words, my, my personal concern with this idea is that I know how hard it is to find candidates for the other committees, not only the Planning Commission. I mean, and it is difficult. So what's to say that you're going to have someone on a committee that serves two or three years, and then you're going to want them to come on this commission, and maybe they've had it? You know, it's six of one and half a dozen of another. I came on this commission because I had served on commission before in the previous community, and I wanted to serve. I'd had experience with a lot of the things that we've done within this, but I don't say that my experiences made me any smarter or any better than anybody else I've worked with. So I'm not sure whether you limit the possibilities of qualified candidates for this commission if you require too many things as prerequisites. I think you have to think about that. There's a lot of bright people out there who don't have the time nor do they want to put out the effort. So that's something to think about.
I'll just add that I'm new to the community. I've only lived here for six months, so I'm green. But at the same time, I moved here specifically to raise my family in this community, and, you know, we fell in love with the community, and I wanted to serve and I wanted to make an impact, you know, to the best that I could.
And it's all part of the process.
And I'm interested in, in serving and, you know, doing the best job that I can. So I agree that I think, you know, kind of arbitrary qualifications per se, you know, end up leading to bad decisions. And also, we don't live in a perfect world where we've got a universe of thousands of potentially qualified candidates here that are looking to be on the Planning Commission. I mean, our president currently, right now, 10 years ago, was a state senator in Illinois. He didn't have a long, you know, track record, and look at him now, I'm not trying to say that we're anything, you know, bigger or important like that, but I think arbitrary, you know, deadlines and prerequisites can unnecessarily curtail your ability to get people that actually want to serve, which I think is probably the most important thing that you want.
I totally agree with that. I think, I mean, to me, the number one requirement ought to be interest, interest in some degree of sharp, should be said. But again, I mean, how do you define that? I mean, if she's sending us, if she's sending this over with the, with the notion that we're supposed to create some thresholds, some threshold standards that have to be met or something like that, then I would have preferred that she'd be a little more specific than just tossing it into our lab and say, come up with something.
I, too, think that it's the willingness to serve is the number one criteria that you have to look at, and, you know, and I think that maybe we need to do a better job, not of the new members I'm talking about in the future, let's do a better job of having conversations with the candidates or the people that put themselves up for nomination to this board or this commission to understand what it's about and what, how important the task is for the town, for the town that we're doing. I also think that it would be great to have people that have been here and participated in everything for years and years and years, but you don't always have that. And the best and the brightest sometimes come to you at the, when you're, at the least expected time, you know? And again, it's the willingness to serve. It's, it's the commitment to doing this and going through all of the detail.
And to learn and to spend the time that it takes, and it does take time.
Right. And if you, if you have that, then, and if you can keep focused on, you got to do what's in the best interest of the town.
Oh, yeah.
That's what we're here for, the best interest of the town and the residents that make up this town. So I think that if we have problems, if the town board has problems with any of us that are serving, then they need to come to us and tell us as individuals, you know, not as, you know, come. If they have a problem with somebody that's on the board, they should come. If we have a problem with a fellow member of the commission, we should do, take that on. So I think that maybe is more of our response back, is that if there's no problem, what are we trying to fix?
Well, the other part, too, is if, as a group, if, for example, a board member thinks that you're not quite meeting up to their expectations, well, the question is, what are those expectations? Let's have a discussion about that, because you don't want to be doing that. But there must be, there might be an angle that is a concern to any one particular or several board members, and that needs to be aired out, and so that can be done in a discussion here at Planning Commission.
Right. And I think that's, that's a good point.
It's also on the group level.
Right.
Because people have expectations, and so when sometimes they aren't met, then there's, we set rules.
Right.
Well, maybe we just need to discuss this and figure out what your expectations are, and we'll try to meet those as best we can, because guess what? You may agree with those expectations and you may disagree with some of those expectations as well. That needs to be aired out.
Right.
If there's an issue.
Then that's the best word for it. It's the expectations that people have. If there's expectations, then you, like you said, Fred, we need to discuss them. Some of them might be unrealistic expectations, but I, and then there's perceived issues that may not really be, and I think the best way is, as you said, air them out. Let's just discuss them. And we don't have to discuss them necessarily all in front of a video camera, but I, I think that serving on these kind of boards and commissions is a pretty big commitment, and you got to want to do it.
Well, yeah.
And you wouldn't be here if you didn't want to do it. And I know they would like to see perhaps, I'm not speaking for any one person, I don't know, I'm sure that everyone would like to see more choice and more candidates so that they could actually make a choose. But if two good candidates could forward for two open positions, that's great.
I agree.
That's great. And then, and as we go forward, if expectations change or need to be modified or discussed, then that's what we should do. I'm all for willingness to serve.
Like, for example, I'll just use an example. It was very clear, and the board and Planning Commission discussed it years ago when we dealt with the marketplace, that they wanted a development that had integrated architecture. That is our goal. I mean, that was, and developers tried not necessarily to do that. They wanted to build a building as cheap as they could, so, because that was better for their bottom line. And the board backed that up. This is what we want, and the Planning Commission understood what that expectation was. And it was, if the staff didn't get it right or we didn't get all the points, they'd pick up on them and tell that, when that thing went up to the Board of Trustees, it was the best that the Planning Commission could do to meet that expectation.
No, that's another very good point. You know, when we talk about the nebulous thing, and I'll make these comments and I'll stop talking, but we make these nebulous day-ones like, do what's right for the town of Superior in the best interest of the town of Superior. What that means is, it meets the contractual obligations that we have with the applicants. We work to meet to the best of our abilities the municipal code, the comprehensive plan, the, you know, and all of the design requirements and guidelines, and that, you need to know those things if you're going to be on this commission. You can't just wait and say, oh, okay, I'm okay with that. No, you can't be okay with it unless you're okay with it as it relates to what's, what's in our town and what's required for being part of our town. And we have the right to say, wait a second, if it doesn't meet our town's expectations. So I'm not talking about personal expectations, and I'm hearing you, you know, we are a little bit of that, you know, if you're, if you're not going to be here and all that kind of stuff, then maybe that's an expectation we need to deal with. But I'm talking about the expectations that we do the best for the town that meets and integrates and makes us a community that's all one. So that's a, that's a really good comment.
I think one of the best things that the commission can do is the regular meeting with the town board, and maybe annually is not quite enough. Maybe it's, you know, twice a year would be, a year's a long time, and maybe, you know, maybe two times a year is not a bad idea.
Or even quarterly.
Could be.
Can't hurt.
Could be. So those, that dialogue, I mean, that's where, I think that's where that dialogue and expectations need to be aired, and some of that did happen during our February meeting, and I think that, I think we should constantly be checking in, you know, are we, are we meeting those expectations? Are we meeting your needs? And how can we constantly be improving on that? So I think that, but in terms of, in terms of the selection of people, I mean, I joined the Planning Commission because I was interested in planning and not necessarily any of the other committees, and I, and it's, you know, it's a time in life when I could serve, and so I think that it's, it is absolutely about the willingness to serve, and you should take people as they are able to give their time, because it's a considerable amount of time, and we're fortunate to have a great board of people here that are willing to do that. So we got a good list?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, let's move on to staff announcements.
Coming up on October 21st, the town has received an application for final development plan, final plot, and vested rights for the Calmonte II development. So staff is in the process of getting that application ready for Planning Commission to review on the 21st. It's then scheduled to go quickly before the town board on October 27th prior to the election as well. So should you decide to take more time, you know, that's, that's your option, but at this point, that is the schedule, and it's a little bit tight. After that, for the remainder of the year, we'll leave it to your discretion. We're not anticipating any further applications for development review this year. Something may come along that is a little faster than what we're anticipating, and we may bring it forth, but at this point, no. So I'll leave it at your discretion, and you can talk about it this meeting or next meeting if you'd like to bring forth the Chapter 16 code changes kind of through the holidays, or if you'd like to hit those in January and hit the ground running at that point, that's, that'll be it, your opinion. So that's all we have. Fred, can you think of anything else?
No. No.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the Calmonte FDP? Is it just the site plan itself or is it the buildings or...
Yes, they'll have model, sketches of the models are part of the deal. Typical layouts for lots, given the different configuration of homes, site plan itself, landscape plan, the whole, you know, everything that we see will be looking at in plan view, yes.
Okay, so it will be the actual models of the homes that they, the view, the elevation views of the homes that they want to put there? Because before, it was just more of a kind of a design...
They'll have the proposed color palette, the proposed architecture, the finishes, the options, all of that.
Because then they can start building from that. Is that my understanding? We won't have to come back again to do any...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
They just file billing permit.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.